4.0, do I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss the bargaining contract between the Board and the Scarborough Administrative Association to return to public session?
She'll move.
Second.
Very good. We adjourn. And 5.0, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
There are some adjustments. And number 11, new business, add the following. 11.15, motion to approve a donation from Robert Mitchell for Wentworth School. Number 12, unfinished business. This comes from the April 2015 Business Meeting and finds its place on the agenda at 12.1, second reading of policy ECAD Security Camera System. And second reading under 12.2 of policy ECAD-R Security Camera System Administrative Procedure. And that would, of course, bump adjournment to 13.0.
Anything else?
Can we, sir, I have a question about the agenda. Can I ask a question about the agenda?
Sure. What's the question?
So, item 11.7 says it's the second reading of the 2015-2016 school calendar.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Should it be the first reading?
No, it's the second reading.
So, according to policy BG, so you had the second reading, April 2nd, and you voted down the budget, correct?
Right.
And according to policy BG, if the policy is not approved by a majority vote, the process for the policy is ended unless the Board agrees to table consideration of the policy to a specific date.
This is something that requires two Board votes, a first reading and a second reading.
So, you had the first and the second reading?
The second reading was not completed because it was voted down. So, we need to have an approved count?
You had to table, sir, I'm sorry, but you had to table in order to reconsider it. You voted down the policy, so it has to go back. So, policy BG says at the next regular Board meeting or later, if so agreed by the Board, the policy shall be placed on the agenda for a second reading and actions. Amendments may be made and acted upon. If the policy is not approved by a majority vote, the process for that policy is ended unless the Board agrees to table considerations of the policy to a specific date.
This is not a policy.
But it went back to the Policy Committee, is that correct?
Yes, but it is reviewed and brought forward by the Policy Committee. It is not a policy, it is the school calendar. The school calendar requires a reading, a first reading that's approved and a second reading that is approved. That is, the second reading is the adoption of the school calendar.
Do you have a policy for that? I looked through all the policies.
I don't know. I think I've answered your question, we need to move on with our business.
So, can you just answer me, so if I feel you're not following the policies correctly, what my, how do I rectify that?
You can contact the Board Chair after this meeting.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. 6.0, Superintendent Seaport?
Okay. I'd like to start by talking about the Community Dialogue. We did have Community Dialogue number three on April 30th. Many of you folks were there and it was really a great success. I do want to thank everyone who participated. It was a very rigorous and productive session. This had more than 40 sessions of dialogue that were hosted within the three hours of the event. It's actually one of the larger numbers of dialogues that I've seen in a Community Dialogue. So, there was lots of activity, lots of topics. It was particularly gratifying to have a number of students, Wentworth through high school, participating. I think that everyone agreed, we saw on the exit sheets as well, that they added a very authentic student voice to many of the dialogue topics. The proceedings from the event will be posted to the school website where they will be accessible and they also will be searchable online. That should be happening this next week. The best part is that those who could not attend the Community Dialogue, or those that were at the Community Dialogue that didn't get to all the sessions that they would have liked, will be able to review the considerations that were captured in those sessions. You'll get to take a look at the notes and you can actually add your own thoughts to those. So, essentially, the dialogue does continue, and that's online. The Leadership Council will be synthesizing all of the data from the dialogue and will be refreshing our plan, that is, the plan that has focused us since 2011. And it will carry us and focus our work for the next 24 months. The resulting plan from this round, we are calling our 24-Month Student-Centered Learning Plan, really reflecting the district's primary focus of creating a student-centered learning environment within every classroom in every school and across our entire school community. So, we'll be talking more about that later. I'd like to direct your attention to the screen. This says Joint Finance Committee Meeting. Of course, we know that's not the case, but this is the material that I covered on May 4th at the Joint Finance Committee Meeting. That's the Finance Committee Meeting that includes both the Town Council Finance and the School Board Finance. It's been readily apparent from me, from the Budget Forum, from public hearing that we had, newspaper articles that I see, some letters that I've seen, that there are three beliefs that are being touted out there in the community as facts. And I would like to address them because they're fundamentally flawed. And I'd like to share instead some facts that are based on research and analysis that actually debunks these beliefs. The first is that state-reported per pupil costs are not accurately reflecting actual school expenses, as some of these expenses are actually carried by the town. Well, indeed, in Scarborough and likely in many other communities, there are some synergies that are used, there are some shared services that are used, and of course, whenever that's done, it always benefits the taxpayer in the town. But the fact of the matter is that when we look, there's actually two areas of cost that were identified here in the town of Scarborough that may, that involve town and school working together, that may skew per pupil expenditures. One is the fact that the school central office is located in the town's building. And the other is that ground is in terms of the shared work in grounds, maintenance, and facility scheduling. So, basically, what we've done is we've adjusted the per pupil spending figures to look at the calculations that were, or assumptions that you can see below. When we do that, there's no appreciable difference in the placement of Scarborough in terms of the relative state average or in terms of our cohort that we compare ourselves with. What we did was we assumed that office space would, and this is, I think, A-level office space, would cost $17 per square foot. And at 3,000 square feet that the school occupies here in this building, we charged, we adjusted and took a favorable adjustment of $51,000, that the school gets a favorable adjustment. I could say that that's a very hefty price for the space that we would be paying for. Grounds maintenance and facility scheduling, we estimated at 70% of total cost would be equal to $368,000. Again, a very hefty estimate. This is something that the Town Manager and I did together, and we agreed to make the estimates hefty so that we could try to put this sort of flawed belief to rest. So, the total cost advantage that would go to the schools if these assumptions were true would be a positive favorable advantage of $419,000 or $135 per pupil. The allocation of $135 per pupil needed to be done to the expense type. So, we took $17 and we added it to school and its, and system administrative costs. And we took the balance of the $135, which is $118, and we added that to transportation and facilities. As I said, when we did that, we were adjusting for any possible skew of the per pupil numbers. And there was no appreciable difference in our position in terms of how we compare with local districts, the state average, and the cohort that we like to compare ourselves to. I also made a note there saying that the total cost advantage estimate is high and adjusted, but it also assumes that Scarborough is the only district that adjusted, but it also assumes that Scarborough is the only district that benefits from shared services with their town. We can look across the way to Cape Elizabeth and know that the Cape Elizabeth School Central Office is located in the Town Office. The Cape Elizabeth Community Services is actually a part of the school organization. So, that's belief number one. Belief number two, school spending is out of control. This is kind of a two-part belief, that school spending is out of control, and that the cause, and it is the cause of tax increases. So, what I can tell you is that we spent a good amount of time, we went back 20 years in the data, from 1994 to 2014. That's all that is available in terms of the most recent, is up to 2014. And we could say that Scarborough had the lowest per pupil cost, lower than the local cohort average, and lower than the state average for the last 20 years. For that same 20 years, 1994 to 2014, had Scarborough invested at the state average, at the number that was the state average that we were below, we were so far below that the schools would have received, over the 20 years, an additional investment of more than $46 million. Million dollars. That's an average of $2.3 million per year for this period of time. $2.3 million, on average, invested in the schools every year for 20 years. That did not happen. For 1994 to 2014, had Scarborough invested at the local cohort average, we have a local cohort of 10 districts. I read the list, I think, at the Budget Forum. I don't have the list in front of me, but they do include places like Kennebunk, and Gorham, and Cape Elizabeth, and Falmouth, and Yarmouth, and a few others. So, for that same 20 years, had Scarborough invested in their schools at just the average of what those cohort group did, in terms of the per pupil rate, the schools would have received an investment of an additional 800, I mean, $84 million. $84 million, which would average for that 20-year period, per year, better than $4.4 million more invested, on average, per year for 20 years. In a comparison, so what we do in education is, we like to triangulate data. That's good local data, so what can you look at nationally? So, we went to the National Center for Educational Statistics, which is part of the National, what is that called, National Council of Education, or, Monique, do you remember? What is it?
National Council.
Yeah, anyway, it's a subset of the National Educational Council. So, we went to them, and what they will do is, they will identify a matched national cohort. And they did that, and they matched us with 16 other like districts. The good point was that one of the districts that came up was MSAD 51, which was a good match, a good demographic match for us. And when we looked at a national cohort, again, it's one data, one data point for one year, because that's all we had available, but it does give us some sense that, again, when we looked at that national cohort of 17 districts, we were spending less than the average of those districts. So, rather than out-of-control spending, which is clearly not the case, either for Maine, for Southern Maine, or nationally, is actually not the driver of any local tax increase. The local tax increase has really been the result of a loss, and a significant loss, of non-tax revenues, and that's been happening since FY09, where state subsidy has decreased, if we include the $1 million that we anticipate, that we will be losing this year. It's a loss of state revenue by more than 58% of that revenue. And the last one that I wanted to deal with is, school spending growth should be limited to the increase in the cost of living as defined by an accepted measure like CPI. Well, again, I think that town and school leaders all share a goal of developing something that's predictable and stable in terms of the growth in the local tax rate. I think that for myself and my team in the schools, we would love nothing more than to have some predictability about what is going to be invested in the schools from one year to the next, rather than always moving into the zone of, oh, my God, what is going to happen? So, we can all benefit from such a metric or a standard. We'd be happy to accept that. However, CPI and similar indices are not the appropriate benchmark. It is not an appropriate benchmark for budget growth in schools, or any other human resources intensive, and this is an important part, non-revenue generating organization. Analysis of expenditure growth during those 20 years that I told you about, in the 10 local cohort districts across the state and in Scarborough, shows that there is an average annual increase in schools ranging from about 4.4% to 5% on average. In times of economic hardship, the other districts have also reduced some of their expenditure growth, but they have still maintained throughout that 20 years, higher per pupil investments. Districts who have invested at that higher level of investment, and who have maintained that over time, as you might imagine, have more easily weathered economic downturns without the same kind of program and infrastructure damage that has been suffered here in Scarborough. So, I do think that it's important to examine some beliefs, examine some of what people are saying and touting in the community, and really spending some time taking a look at what the data tells us, because I think it can be very informative. I've asked Joanne as well to speak about adult education, another area where there seems to be a good amount of confusion.
Yes. The definition of adult education is activities that develop knowledge and skills to meet immediate, long-range educational objectives for adults who have completed or interrupted formal schooling and have accepted adult roles and responsibilities. The programs activities include to foster development of fundamental tools for adult learning, adult literacy, prepare students for post-secondary educational programs, college transition, and for post-secondary career, career prep, vocational certificate programs, or any new or different careers through skill development and enriched qualities of life. At the Scarborough Adult Education Learning Center, we are committed to provide adult basic education and English language learner instruction, as well as adult high school diploma completion, including the HISA diploma. About two years ago, GED was changed to a different program, which is now called HISA diploma. We offer career and certification opportunities for all adults, and our college career transition classes are designed to assist students both academically and through career exploration. A high school diploma, we offer distant learning for the high school diploma for the adults. This year, we have over 20 students who are enrolled in trying to complete their high school diploma. We have credit recovery for some Scarborough High School students. Again, this is through online learning. In FY14, we provided classes for 41 students at Scarborough High School, and we continue that through the adult learning. Career preparation is, I have to say, probably one of the areas that we have done, we've seen the most growth. We have accelerated our programs for career and college preparation so that our citizens have opportunities to find, advance, or change their careers with professional assistance. We offer free college and career counseling to the community, and have had a great deal of success in counseling with 11 recipients for these activities. In addition to career exploration, the college transition academic classes have been limited to Accuplace or MAPS preparation, and we had 12 students who participated in that. In the certificate programs, we started about three years ago in offering a CNA program with over 30 participants earning their CNA certificate. And this year, we have run two classes. We're planning for another class during the summer, and we anticipate 23 CNAs to have obtained the certificate by the fall. Along with the certificate programs, we have offered Pharmacy Tech, Certified Medical Assistant, and Dental Assistant. Another program that is offered through Adult Ed is the English Language Learner Classes that, since spring of 2014, have really expanded. We have partnered with Portland Public Schools for their overflow, and we have currently 15 students who are enrolled, and looking at 21 for enrollment through the summer for beginner and to advanced levels. The Learning Center also offers 100 classes throughout the school year, ranging in arts, including painting, languages, music, health strategy, self-improvement classes. We've had over 324 people in the community participate. Overall, during the last year, FY14, we've had 544 people participate in the Scarborough Adult Learning Center.
Good, thank you. There are two pieces in your packet I just wanted to address quickly. The 2014-2015 enrollment totals, that was requested, and so that's in your packet. It's interesting, if you look at the grand totals from the beginning, this year, we have actually increased by more than, about 20, about?
21.
21 students, thank you. You are quick with the numbers. 21 students. The second piece in your packet is the PLT Sharing Day, and I just want to remind Board members that you are invited on May 22nd to the celebration of teaching and learning in the Scarborough Schools, which is the PLT Sharing Day. The scheduled events is on your invitation there, and things get kicked off at around 7:45 that morning. Last thing, in terms of my report, I did want to ask David Creach to speak about the April 15th College and Career Exploration Day. It was a big success. There were a lot of folks who contributed to that success. David, you want to speak to that?
Good evening. I think it's maybe a month ago I started the conversation telling you a little bit about our plans. So, I'm happy to report that on April 15th, we were able to pull off at Scarborough High School something I think is rare for most high schools to be able to do. An important piece to this is, as I had mentioned the last time I spoke to you, we always talk in education about how it'd be nice to do something outside the confines of the classroom, to do something for students above and beyond a typical day. So, with the support of local businesses and community members, and with the support of our superintendent, what we did on April 15th was, is we took and created an educational opportunity for each grade level that was unique and different based on the grade level that they are in. So, I'll start with the 11th graders because that tends to be the one that probably wasn't seen as the most fun event for that day. But April 15th was targeted by the state of Maine for the day when the SATs have to be administered. So, we had decided to make the SAT and the Accuplace are available to all our juniors at no cost. So, on that particular day, juniors came in and tested from 7:45 to about 12:45. And when the testing was done, we had a barbecue for them afterwards, and that was the day for the juniors. During that time, we realized that it was going to be difficult to have a regular school day for the rest of our students while we're testing the SATs. Strict guidelines when it comes to testing. So, we seized the opportunity, again, to work with the local business leaders to create three programs for the other grade levels. So, the 9th and 10th graders were given the opportunity to participate in college visits. So, our grade nine students, we started the day by having both the 9th and 10th graders observe a presentation by the Westbrook Regional Vocational Center, and by PAS, Portland Arts and Technology High School. So, as 9th and 10th graders, they got an opportunity to see all the wonderful programs that exist in those two vocational centers, knowing that in the 11th and 12th grade year, if they qualify, they can opt to attend some of those programs. So, we exposed them to those first, then we put them on buses, took the 9th graders to SMCC, and the 10th graders were split between UNE and USM. All three colleges created extensive programs for the students where we had teachers supervising them in groups, and basically taking them through the campus for those three or four hours, going into classrooms, learning about programs and career opportunities. They got a chance to eat in the cafeteria where all the college, and college was in full session. If you've ever been to UNE or SMCC this time of year, absolutely beautiful. So, the 9th and 10th graders had an opportunity to experience a college visit and see what programs were offered, maybe for some of them for the first time. That program ended with the students coming back to the high school right around the end of the regular school day. The seniors were probably our biggest challenge. Liz Burks, Matt Parity, Chris Chiazzo, myself, and Sue Cressy worked on a plan for them that we wanted to give them an experience just before they graduated that we thought would benefit them greatly. So, first, part one of the program was feeding them, huge for high school seniors, so we had a nice breakfast for them. We had a workshop session in the morning in which 18 local professionals came in. We had a two-hour workshop session where our local business leaders told us, there really is some important skills that our seniors need to graduate with to be successful in career, in the workplace, and in college. We identified those three sets of skills as teamwork, situational awareness, and communication skills. So, 18 business leaders met with our students. We had 10 students per group. We designed a curriculum. Mr. Chiazzo and I were just laughing about, we had videos associated with what's really bad communication and what's really good communication. If any of you have ever seen League of Their Own, when he curses her out for missing the cutoff person, if you've ever seen that scene, it's very funny. It's an example of really poor communication. We kind of used videos and that kind of scheme to get the seniors interested and involved, and these 18 business leaders basically took the videos, took the format, and created what we think is their own personal spend on how these skills have been important to them and their success as professional leaders. So, when that session was done around 10 o'clock, Mr. Chiazzo and Liz Burks had worked very hard with Mr. Parity to create opportunities for every single senior to job shadow. So, they left at 10 o'clock, and they went to local businesses and got an opportunity to job shadow for a career that they were interested in. And when that day was completed, basically, they were on their own for the rest of the day. So, some examples, not only do we have the local businesses, but we were able to take 10 students down to Portsmouth Shipyard that were interested in engineering. They got to go around with engineers, they got a chance to go into a nuclear-powered submarine, all kinds of experiences like that, that we felt would benefit them just before they graduated from high school. So, all in all, the feedback that we've received has been extremely positive. The most honest and best feedback I can share with you has been, at least 25 parents have given me this information. They sent me an email and said, "Mr. Creach, you need to know that when my child got up that morning, it was everything I could do to drag him in the car to get them to go to school. I don't want to go to UNE today. I don't want to go do a job shadow. I don't want to do these things." Every single one of those cases that started that way ended with, they came home, and that's all they talked about all night, was what a great experience it was during the job shadow, how much they learned when they talked to the professionals, how cool it was to be at UNE, or they didn't know SMCC offered all that it did. So, I think the learning for us as a school is that it's extremely important to provide these opportunities for our students. So, all in all, I think April 15th was a very successful day at high school. Thank you.
Any questions or comments, okay, or people?
I'm sure, well, I have one. I'm sure it was a huge undertaking, so appreciate you and the committee that helped you do that, because this doesn't happen by just snapping your fingers, I know.
It was a lot of work, a lot of work. Thank you.
I just wanted to reiterate what Dave said. It really was, I was very impressed with the business community and their dedication and devotion to this process. They were very open and forthright with resources and ideas, and I think that's really what made it a success. I did want to ask a question, obviously. It would be nice to know and to see some of the follow-back from those job shadows. So, what's the plan for that kind of check back and follow-up?
The plan is twofold. First, we're going to try to gather information from the students in the form of a survey. And then, from the business leaders, we're going to do the same thing, except it's going to be more anecdotal, and I think we're going to send them a survey. We sent out thank yous, but we're going to follow up with, do you have any suggestions or any recommendations based on the experiences you had? And we'll take that information, put all of that together once the school year ends, and use that to kind of formulate any plans we might do in the future that are similar to this. And I didn't get a chance, I apologize. I should have, thank you for bringing that up. What Mr. Chiazzo mentioned too, school leaders and business community members spent an enormous amount of time spent an enormous amount of time outside their regular work schedule to make this possible. So, I want to thank them as well.
And David, I just want, I know that we've talked about the business partners. We do have a council of school and business partners, some of which played an important role and they're actually higher ed partners that we have. So, they're still part of that group, but they are our higher ed partners that made the partnering with SMCC, with USM and with University of New England possible because we have very active members from each of those higher ed institutes.
And to speak to that, maybe the easiest piece to this from the school's perspective was we described each of the individuals that Dr. Entwistle was referring to. We described to them what we were interested in for a program. They did all the work, they set up everything in each of those colleges. And as a matter of fact, great feedback from one of the colleges, USM indicated to us that what they learned putting together this plan for our school is something that they are now going to do, they're going to invite other local high schools next year. They're going to take a day and they're going to designate it for this type of event. They're going to use what we did as a model to have other high schools bring students in and have the same experience that we had. But, the individuals from those colleges, the plan was all done by all of them and it was absolutely wonderful.
I wanted to make sure those folks were ready.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Are you a couple?
Yes.
Eight point oh, I'm sorry, seven point oh. Chair's report. I'll just go quickly through a few things. Reminder to sign up for the Chambers Annual Meeting, May nineteenth at five thirty at Piper Shores. If you haven't done so already, it was a really nice event last year. We did express appreciation to our staff this week in honor of Teacher Appreciation Week. If there are any parents or students out there who have a special teacher in mind or someone they'd just like to thank, you still have time to do that, tomorrow or Monday. It'd be a great idea, just write a little note, that's all they need, they don't need a gift. So, we appreciate our teachers and it's nice for them to hear from you. May twenty-seventh is the Maine School Boards Association Day at the State House. It's called Invest in Kids. School board members around the state will have an opportunity to gather together beginning at ten thirty in the morning in Augusta at the Cross Office Cafe and then move to the State House. And they will be urging legislators and you'll have an opportunity to meet with your own legislators to advocate for students. So, I'd love to go and if anyone else is interested, just let me know, maybe we can carpool. Let's see, one other thing is our teacher retirement celebration is coming up pretty soon, May twenty-eighth. So, you might want to keep that on the agenda as well. And that's the end of my report, do you have any committee reports? And Mrs. Murphy?
We do have a lot going on in policy. As you can see from the agenda, we continue to slog through the policy manual. We're reviewing every policy, including some that have been recently updated, but there are some that have not been reviewed in decades. So, we are going from oldest to newest and reviewing and updating if necessary revising every policy as we go along. So, there's a bunch on the agenda tonight and we continue to meet every other Wednesday, including next Wednesday, which is, we'll be at ten o'clock because it's a late start week.
Very good, thank you.
I have communications and we just continue to disseminate information via our Facebook page, through the local media. Donna and Chris have both written articles for the leader and Chris and Sean Baybine as chairs of the finance committees on our respective councils have also submitted articles. So, it's just a way to sort of make sure the correct information is getting out there. So, we can continue to do that. If there's something specific that you'd like more information on, you can always email the board or the town council. Then, the only other thing I had was about the community dialogue. I sat in on two different discussions about communication and a lot of great ideas came out of that. So, I'm hoping that that might be one of the main topics that get filtered through and if not, maybe there's a way to create some sort of ad hoc committee of community members. The library was in one of my discussions and there were a lot of different sort of cross-section of people around town.
Well, it's been a very busy month in finance. I'd like to start off by thanking the chairperson for helping me through this process with my gift. I'll start off with the public budget forum that we had on April twenty-ninth. I thought it was very successful as a first time around process. I know many of you were there as well. I'd be very curious to hear your feedback from the other side of the table of what it was like in the audience, but it certainly felt like it was a success from our perspective. We fielded, I believe, a hundred and twenty-four questions total or something like, something along those lines. Certainly, you know, we'll review that process again next year. I think it was beneficial, hopefully the community found it beneficial as well. Regards to the Joint Finance Committee, I can't really stress enough the appreciation I have for Counselor Baybine, Counselor Donovan and Counselor Hayes for taking the time to go through that process with us. We may not agree and we may have some very strong disagreements amongst our groups, but I think it was a good format and a good setting to have discussions. We've wrapped that process up effectively for this year in terms of our one-on-one meetings. The last meeting that we had, we did discuss a revised one-to-one proposal. We agreed to support the town finance group with some data for their recommendations on May thirteenth that they'll be making to the council. And we also agreed that because we're not going to have an opportunity to meet again as two bodies before the second reading of the budget, we'll come back together again at the end of the budget process and do a lessons learned type of setting where we can go through and try and set the tone hopefully very positively moving forward for next year, what we did well, what we could do better, what didn't work so well and maybe will change, so. Finance bit tonight, we reviewed and confirmed a revision to our one-to-one proposal that we'll be forwarding on to the finance, town finance committee for their consideration on the overall budget and we will be moving that forward with our second reading and adoption. That's the plan unless something changes. Third quarter financials were presented for initial review by the finance. Those will be posted upon completion of the review by the finance committee. We're just going to go through and digest them a little bit and make sure we don't have any questions or things that need confirmation from Kate. Let's see, the state passed, on a positive note, they passed the Charter School Funding Act. I'm not sure what the name of that was, but basically that moves the cost of charter schools out of our budget and into the general state budget. That's a positive thing for us on the expenditure side. It may have a slight negative impact for us on the EPS side, but overall, it's a positive thing for Scarborough, so that's very helpful. There are still some legislative issues and Jackie can probably speak to them more directly that are still in play that could affect the EPS formula. So, we are in close communications with the town about those things and we want to make sure that we're aware of what those are, how they might impact us and move forward in a hopefully positive, positive way. Upcoming dates, let's see, we have, um... Next week, we have a town council finance meeting on the thirteenth at four o'clock. That's not a joint finance committee meeting, but they will be looking at some of our information to make their recommendations to the town council. So, I would suggest and hope that at least our finance committee will be present there. I know Dr. Entwistle will plan on attending. Then at seven o'clock, we actually have a joint workshop between the full board and the full council. And we're hoping that's an opportunity for them to review some of the data we provided, ask some questions, get some feedback and give us another opportunity to clarify any questions or concerns that they might have. Then we have, on May twentieth, is the town council's second reading and voting on, for the budget approval, followed by the Thursday, following Thursday, we have our second reading and budget vote. So, that's it, I'll be very happy at the end of next month.
I just need to amend our policy committee meeting, I knew something sounded wrong about it. Next Wednesday, actually, at least the two of us are going to be, and Donna, I think, are going to be at the school law conference at Drummond and Woodson. So, we moved our policy communications meeting to Tuesday morning at nine o'clock. Just wanted to make sure everybody knew in case they wanted to all come in droves.
First, since our last meeting, I have attended a board meeting from Maine School Boards Association at which the acting commissioner spoke with us for about an hour. And of note is the fact that he said that the state is not happy with the platform being used for the testing. Evidently, there were a lot of glitches around the state with that testing platform. So, they will be investigating other platforms moving forward. Don't ask me why he hasn't... The, uh, on Monday, I testified on behalf of Maine School Boards Association on LD ten-ten, which is the bill that was asking that schools or public employers actually could outsource without having to negotiate for other than direct, people having direct contact with children. I mean, school boards did ask that that be separated from the right-to-work piece because there were five or six bills on the right-to-work piece and this was thrown in with it and therefore, it was considered a union-breaking bill and it is still alive, but just barely. So, it will go before, it'll go to the floor, but it doesn't appear to have a lot of links. We are continuing, we just completed negotiations with our administrative group and we'll sign that contract this evening, thank goodness, and it was a very nice negotiations. We got a lot of minutia out of the contract that was not needed there because it's covered by law and by policy and by their personal contracts. And we are continuing our ongoing negotiations with our custodian cafeteria workers. And we have a meeting on that next week.
The Sibago Education Alliance met April thirteenth in Buxton and there was an alliance school update about the closing of the school though the alliance will still be functioning for other programs. Dr. Entwistle had met with staff out at the school and had helped them work on resumes and things to help them look for new jobs. So, I know that everybody at the alliance school had appreciated that and so did the other superintendents, so thank you for doing that. And Mr. Gauss from-
Westbrook.
Westbrook was actually going to go speak to staff just to kind of give them how things were going to keep progressing. Summer workshop, there will be a summer workshop on strategic planning for the future on what kind of programs will go on and things like that. So, that does not have a date yet. The tech camp is not going to be happening this year. They're looking at other things, other opportunities that can come up instead of just a tech camp and doing the same thing every year. There is also going to be an audit and list of assets that were left from the school to be dispersed. So, many of them belong to Buxton, the furniture and things of that nature, so there probably won't be much. And that's it, our next meeting is actually going to be held here, so we won't be having to drive anywhere, May eleventh, next Monday. So, that's it for me now.
I would like to update something that has occurred at both the budget forum and last evening at the public hearing with regards to backpacks. There are two backpack programs in town. One is at the beginning of the school year for school supplies. That is run by Project Grace and many people participate. Kwanis is only one organization that participates. We have annually provided anywhere from ten to fifteen to twenty backpacks, both from Kwanis and members of Kwanis. The second program is a food program for families, children. I think last vacation that we fed somewhere around eighty children. Kwanis does in fact make generous contributions to that, as do many, many people in the town, as well as I think the chamber and the rotary and the lions. So, it is not just a Kwanis project providing the backpacks. It is a community effort and we are one participant. And I thank people for thinking that we're doing that much, but unfortunately, we don't have that much of a resource. To try and help out the town however, and this is a plug, we are having our annual food drive for the Scarborough Food Pantry ongoing this week. And the drop-offs can be at Saco Benefit Savings Savings and at Ron Forest Fence until Friday and then we will have drop-off Saturday at the Black Point Church and the Dunston Fire Station. And if anybody needs a pickup, just call me and I will see that somebody goes out at a convenient time to pick up food that you might wish to donate. Thank you very much and thank you for letting me say that.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. And I'll just report briefly out on the EDT team, that is the Professional Development Teacher Evaluation Committee. They met this afternoon that I attended and I have asked Dr. Entwistle to add them to our workshop agenda coming up next in two weeks because I think it's important for you to meet them and for you to hear the kind of work that they've been doing for two years now on their own time and also what's ahead because there's going to be some really important days coming up in the next few weeks for our school system on this topic. So, they'll hopefully be here next time around. And that concludes our committee reports. We have no student representatives this evening, so we have no reports. Ten point oh, recognition.
And I think this is Mr. Legage's presentation in terms of recognition of the winter athletes and athletics.
Well, thank you very much, I'm excited to be here, but our coaches have patiently waited, so I'm going to let them get right to it. So, let me introduce first Coach Ron Kelly, girls indoor track.
Thank you for the recognition. Two captains here of the group that we had, Kayla Griffiths and, I'm not drawing it, but Janet Douglas. It was another excellent year for us. We're still in a rebuilding mode. Last year, I think we were ninth or tenth in the state, but not that far out of first place. I think it was like ten or twelve points. This year, we still had a very young team. We had one loss during the regular season. However, when it came to the conference championship, we thought we had a chance of winning it and we did actually quite easily. Went to the state meet and even during part of the meet, we were leading, but some of the points from Thornton hadn't really developed yet. But, we ended up third, definitely on the right track. You know, really only losing one girl that scored points this year off the team and everybody else is back for one or two years. So, it looks promising again for next year, thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
And boys indoor track, Coach Vayou.
Thank you and congratulations to all the sports teams that competed this winter and big shout-out to the hockey team for winning the state title. Boys indoor track had another successful campaign, undefeated regular season for the sixth straight year. Won the SMA championship for the sixth straight time and scored a record, two-hundred-and-fifteen points in that championship. It's one of the finest moments I think the program's had in its illustrious career. The next closest team was ninety-nine in the championship meet, that's pretty good. Unfortunately, at the state meet, we went in as favorites and, you know, we had won four straight titles and they don't give you the title when you walk in the door unfortunately. But, we came up just short, three points. We had the lead heading into the final relay and, you know, Falmouth had the fastest relay and they won, second fastest time ever in the state they ran. And our boys fought all the way to the end and got fourth. So, you know, we didn't win the championship, but we learned some good lessons out of that and, you know, those guys will be better for it in the end and most- And most of those guys will be back next year. And we also have a lot of them competing in the outdoor season and they're really motivated. So it was nice to see them take that loss in stride and you know, focus. We had two individual state champions on the year, Hugh McSorley in the shot put and Jacob Terry in the two-mile. That was two straight for Jacob. And we had school records in the pole vault and the distance medley. So looking forward to another outstanding campaign next year and hopefully we'll get back to the top. Thanks.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And girls basketball, Coach Dierdahl.
My second year with the program gave some stability to the girls. They'd been making some changes. I was glad to work with the kids for two years in a row. Like to thank the administration for making my job so easy, Mr. Legage and Mr. Creech. One thing I'd like to let you know, the facility that those kids get to practice and compete in is second to none. Our kids are very fortunate to be in that building over there and we're really fortunate to have that set up and just really proud of that. And when other teams come in, they look around, you can see their eyes go up and they're going, wow, this is pretty cool. We're fortunate to have it every day. Very impressed with our student athletes at Scarborough. They're very mature, very respectful, love to be coached, want to be coached, want to be pushed hard. That makes our jobs as coaches much easier. We had twenty-six girls in our program this year. Our JV and our first team both had successful seasons. The varsity finished at nine and nine and we're very competitive in fifteen of the eighteen games that we played. Any coach would tell you that, coaches of the team sport, that you want to be playing your best at the end of the year. I thought we were. We upset South Portland in the last regular season game, played probably our best game of the year in a preliminary game to get to the expo. We beat a good Marshall team. And then our team goal every year is to get to the semifinals, which is the first night's games at the Civic Center. And we hung with Thornton Academy, which ended up winning the Western title for three quarters, but we fell up a little bit, just a little bit short. Three seniors are going on to compete collegiately at different sports. Sam Sparta is going to Southern New Hampshire to play soccer. Bailey Adams will be going to St. Michael's to play lacrosse. And Ashley Briggs will be playing basketball on a scholarship at St. Anselm's. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And Coach Tobias, boys basketball?
Thank you. And I also want to echo what Mike has to say about the basketball program. I also want to thank Mr. Legage, Mr. Creech, excellent administrators. And also the facilities here at Scarborough are excellent. And also what like Mike said was, it's really the best in the state, no question about it. Basketball program this year, the boys, was a very, very competitive basketball team in a very difficult league. We made the playoffs and I felt this was a great accomplishment for us and gave Deering a great game in the first round. Came up a little bit short, but I was very, very proud of how the boys played all year long, especially in that game against Deering. We had two players who deserve special notice, Malani Hicks and Nate Wessel. Nate was a third-team all-conference player for us. And Malani was a first-team all-conference player, also a McDonald's All-Star participant, which is a great honor. And also was an honorable mention All-State selection. So I think both those boys, along with the whole team, did very, very well this year. In conclusion, as far as a basketball coach, I look for three things from any team. Come to practice and practice very hard, play hard in every game and compete, and they play together like a team. And if I look at all three of those goals that we set forth at the beginning of the year, I think they accomplished all three of those goals and I was very, very proud of all of them. And as far as a coach, that's all you can ask. We had a really good and very, very coachable group. And we have a lot of very talented young players coming up through the system and I think the future is bright for Scarborough boys basketball. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Coach Latara with wrestling?
My name's Brian Latart. I'm actually the assistant wrestling coach. Coach Stevenson unfortunately couldn't be here today, but I want to echo the other coaches. Definitely to Mr. Legage for supporting our program. If the parents in the council doesn't know what wrestling is, it's not WWE on TV, okay? You know, so unlike any sport in the town of Scarborough, and I hate to single us out, wrestling is truly the only co-ed sport here in Scarborough. We had four females on our team this year. And it was, it's pretty trying to try to teach wrestling skills to the females, but we get through it. And the boys accept them wholeheartedly and they came together, it was great. Wrestling is an individual sport and also a team sport, very similar to the track and tennis and swimming, so to speak. So unfortunately, as a team, we don't win many meets, but when we go to tournaments, the wrestlers really perform well. This year, we had a freshman wrestler, Jeremy Cindrowski, won a state championship as a freshman. That's pretty much unheard of. So hopefully, if he continues that success, sophomore, junior, senior year, the sky's the limit for this kid. Unlike other sports, my definition of wrestling is it's more like a chess match, excuse me. It's not always the biggest, strongest guy that's going to win. Chuck, you're always trying to outmaneuver, outthink your opponent. And that is truly what we try to teach these kids, is to slow down, so to speak. What we instill in them is probably what every other coach does, confidence, dedication, discipline, work ethic. And you know, we took our lickings a couple of years ago, the wrestling program, so to speak. But with the support of the administration and Michael Gage, we've overcome that and we've got a great bunch of kids. And you know, it's a pleasure. So thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Coach Cashra with girls hockey?
See, when I'm on the bench, the refs ask me to put my helmet on and I have to remind them that I'm thirty years old, not me. So, with that being, there we go. Sorry, Norm, I'm going to have to put this up. So I don't want to repeat everything the other coaches said, but Michael Gage, especially this season, has been so supportive. Ice hockey, we all know it's an expensive sport. Finding ice time this year was almost nearly impossible. So Norm and I, there were times, two, three times a week, we were traveling to Auburn, not getting home till eleven-thirty, midnight. And my girls, and I know his boys, were up on time and going to school. So they just have fantastic time management skills and without Michael Gage's support, this hockey program wouldn't be nearly as successful as we have been in the last few years. This season, I had seventeen underclassmen, I had twelve freshmen. So a lot of the teams in the state wrote us off. The year before, we went undefeated and won states. Unfortunately, we didn't repeat that, but this was the most fun I've ever had. This is my ninth season coaching. I have the toughest, most resilient girls I've ever met. They've gone through a lot this year. We ended up in Western Finals, lost four to two, but we outshot Falmouth. Of course, I'm biased and I thought we outplayed them, right? I get a little passionate on the bench, you can't tell. There's times when Mike looks at me and I'm like, you got it. So, Norm knows too. But really, just really good girls. We're really excited to see what, you know, the next few years bring. Sammy Shubottom scored forty-eight goals this season. That's the most any girl hockey player has scored in the state. She won Winter Athlete for the Forecaster as well as the Portland Press. Is a fantastic representation for Scarborough. And I just felt it was important to know my girls suffered a pretty tragic loss this season. I'm sure some of you in this room may be aware of it, but we have sisters on the team who lost their brother tragically. And we had a game that night and the administration did a really excellent job in providing support to my girls. And my girls could have fallen apart that game for the rest of the season and instead they came together and really moved forward as a team. And I think it goes to show that sports really create a safe and supportive atmosphere for kids to learn that resiliency and move forward. If you can't tell by the way I talk, I'm a licensed clinical social worker. So I always, and I know I said this last year and then I'll stop talking, but I think it's really important, I know you guys are going to the State House, I have to go as a social worker, but the more we cut and the more we look at numbers and dollar signs, I think those who may be in power forget that those numbers and dollar signs are the kids. And I see it every day. When you cut, I see and I hear what happens to those kids. So I just hope that people continue to advocate because we have some pretty awesome kids in our program. So, Norm, it's all you.
Thank you.
And Coach Norm Gagne. I'll just say that when I introduce Coach, that he did receive Coach of the Year honors this year and also boys hockey won their first-ever state championship in Scarborough history this year. Coach Gagne is certainly a veteran coach. He is just a few wins away from some major landmarks. Nine wins, I believe, from being ranked the second most successful high school hockey coach in the nation. And about twelve wins away from seven hundred career wins for a high school coach. So we're very fortunate to have all the coaches here, but this year has been especially wonderful opportunity for the boys program. I'll let Coach Gagne speak a little bit more about this season.
Thank you, Mike. I'd also like to thank Mr. Creech and Mr. Legage for all the support they've given our hockey program this year. I know that this has been an unbelievable season for me. I've been doing this for forty years and I've had a lot of great teams over the years. But this is a special, special and magical year. We faced a lot of adversity throughout the year, not only with finding practice time and traveling to Auburn and playing home games in Auburn, but also on the ice. We suffered a lot of injuries this year. I don't know why. In my forty years, I've never seen anything like it. We've had from broken collarbones to concussions and what have you. But we never played with the same lineup each night from day one to the end of the year. It was just unbelievable. And coupled with that, we had eight players that had to play major roles on the varsity level for the first time. And a lot of people don't understand that in a sport that's physical like we're playing, to have freshmen and sophomores have to go out and play against some of the teams we play against, we play one of the toughest schedules in the state, to play the Lewiston's, the St. Doms', the Falmouth's. And Falmouth, the Portland Press Herald asked me at the beginning of the year, who I thought were the tougher teams in the league this year and who to look out for. And I told them that St. Doms' and Falmouth are going to be the two teams that are going to be back in the state because they had both been in the state championship game number one. And they were returning most of their players. So they were twelve, St. Doms had twelve seniors on their team. And I believe Falmouth had ten. And they just had twenty-one freshmen come in that year too, this last year. So my expectations of the year was to, I hoped that we could end up in the top four. And that was a stretch that I felt. But as the season went on and we got to our tenth or eleventh game, we're facing Falmouth. And they had only given up three goals all season in eleven games, ten games, three goals. And I think the odds were really stacked against us, having lost one of our top goal scorers in game one with a broken collarbone, really put a damper on what we were looking at. And I was just thinking, if we can only keep it close. Well, we got into the first period and just near the end, we got a five-minute major from hitting from behind. And I had three players injured with the trainer. And my assistant coach looked at me and said, what are we going to do? I said, we've got to survive this next five minutes and then we'll figure it out in the locker room. And we did. We gave up one goal in that five-minute span. Part of that five minutes, we were, it was five-on-three. And we gave up only one goal. So I went into the locker room after that and made a few adjustments, but I told the kids, I says, you're never going to face the adversity that you're facing right now the rest of the season. I've never had a team have to, had to face the adversity that they were facing at that point. And I said, you're only one goal from tying this game. Well, we went out in that first minute of the second period and tied the game up on a power play. And tied the game up and shortly after that, in the third period, we ended up going ahead two to one and ended up winning that game three to one. After that game, I told the seniors, I said, I really believe that we could win a state championship with this team now, that I see what we can do. And I said, but I don't think the younger players understand that. So the next practice, we went to Auburn and St. Doms' locker room was just down the hall from ours and it was empty. So I took the eight young men that we had, the two freshmen and the six sophomores, in that locker room before we went out to practice. And I told them, I said, listen, I says, I really believe that we can win a state championship, but I've got to get you guys to believe that too. And I said, you've got to keep it simple. A lot of times, I said, you've got to get over the fear factor. And one of the boys says, what's that, Coach? I says, you've got to stop going out on the ice and just running around hoping that you're going to survive. And it's hard, it's difficult. And I says, if you can all learn that and get over that, everything's easy after that. And little by little and game by game and practice by practice, they got better. But you don't do that without good leadership. And we had some excellent leaders this year who really nurtured the young kids, built their confidence, got them to understand that keep it simple in their roles because all of those seniors had been there before. They were the young guys on the team. Those are the ones that had to find and get over the fear factor and do those things and keep it simple. And we did that. And I've never been more proud of a group that has done what they've done. Being able to trust one another, taking responsibility for their job on the ice, being able to overcome adversity. And I think one of the most important things was believing in each other and believing in themselves. And I look at the Falmouth game, the Falmouth has knocked us out of the playoffs the past three years, semifinals and twice in the Western Maine final. So I told them in that game, I says, tonight's the night that we're going to break the door down and we're going to beat them. Well, with eight minutes left in the game, we were down three to one. And we took a five-minute major. And I'm saying, it's over. But we found a way. And within that next five minutes, we went from three to one to five to three. I couldn't believe it. But these kids, that's what they, they never gave up and they just fought to the end. And that's something I've been trying to teach them for the last five years, is not give up and to do that and to be able, it's not what happens, it's how you react to what's happening. And they did that. And I think they learned some valuable lessons, life lessons, in that game. And then when we went up against St. Doms', after beating Falmouth, we stayed over to watch the St. Doms' Lewiston game. And it was scary to see those two teams. They're so fast. And the twelve seniors for St. Doms are just unbelievable players. I think they placed seven people on the Eastern All-State team. But we found a way. Our kids, and I have to give credit to Mr. Legage for giving us the software huddle where we were able to take our game films, break them up, put little notes and send them out to the kids on their computers at home and let them- and let them critique themselves. I told them the first time we sent it out, I said, "You got some homework tonight. You've gotta find out, uh, take the clips, write down what you did well and what you, and then, and coach yourself and what you didn't do well and learn from those mistakes." And it was so valuable. By the end of the year, I mean, they, they improved so much by just doing that. And, uh, and they were so easy to coach. They were eager to learn and easy to coach, and it makes it our, uh, my job a lot easier, having kids like that. It's, um, I, and like I said, in the seven state championships that I've been able to achieve with my players, this one is so, so special. I told them they were at the top of the list because the, our expectations were never to s- do what we did. But I wanna thank you all for having us, and thank Michael Gage.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations.
Um, let me just wrap up by saying that, um, Coach French, our swim coach was, uh, was here early, had to leave, uh, uh, unfortunately, but did want me to share that they had thirty-three boys and twenty girls in the swim program this year. Uh, they had eight first-year swimmers, uh, in the program, and I know this sounds amazing, but, uh, they have a lot of opportunities, I think, but they had over three hundred personal best times this year, um, in the swim program. They averaged about thirty-seven point five best times each meet. Um, so they were, uh, really fortunate and had a great, uh, swim season. Uh, Coach, uh, Marsanskas, who's our cheering coach, they had a, a great, uh, season this winter. They went to the state championship and competed in Augusta and, um, just, just had a fabulous season, not only supporting our teams cheering on the sideline, but, um, winter cheering is competitive, that they have their own competitions, and they did real well this year as well. Uh, Coach Mills with Alpine Skiing, um, could not be here this evening, but our boys, uh, Alpine Ski Team were the SMA champions this year and had, uh, two students that competed in a state championship, and the girls were our, our league runners-up in Alpine skiing. Uh, Nordic skiing was down a little bit this year. We had, um, about, uh, six to twelve students, um, that participated. It fluctuated, um, from day to day, and, um, and that program, um, we're not sure what's going to happen with Nordic skiing moving forward. Um, so all in all, uh, very exciting. As you heard Coach Gagne and the other coaches speak about the importance of the skills that are achieved, um, through educational athletics, and, uh, those skills, um, are certainly critical to a, a student's maturation, so, um, we're, we feel really, uh, confident that the things that we do in athletics and activities are important to a holistic education. Um, and we have, we're very fortunate to have great leaders, um, leading our students, um, and exceptional students who have to balance a lot. You heard, um, some talk about, uh, ice times and, and pool times are the same way and late evenings and early mornings, and, and still our students, um, uh, functioned at a high level academically. So, uh, we're really fortunate. So, questions?
I have, uh, no, go ahead.
Sorry. Um, one more time, like, I know we talk about this quite a bit, but should you please reiterate the, uh, participation rate, student, roughly percentage of student participation rate in athletics?
I think that we are comfortably in athletics and student activities together. I think we're comfortably, um, in the high eighties and low nineties of students that participate in some after-school activity, which is really unheard of. We're really fortunate. Um, we have anyways between three and five hundred students participate in athletics, um, in any particular season, and, um, and we just have a huge turnout and huge, uh, number of students that participate in club activities. For example, in our Key Club, I think we have over a hundred students right now that, uh, participate just in our Key Club program and, and provide a lot of good community service for, um, Scarborough and surrounding towns in Scarborough.
Thank you.
We're very fortunate.
And, and the Key Clubber was just elected New England governor for all of Key Clubs, Ms. Jamison.
Okay, yes, now.
I, I just have a comment. Um, I want to congratulate all of the coaches. Um, my family this winter went to the majority of the girls or the boys' basketball games, and I have to say, I'm a nineteen ninety-two grad of South Portland High School, so I feel very comfortable with the, the basketball coaching staff here. But congratulations to all of you.
Good, anyone else?
I ju- I just, I enjoy the whole participation piece, as you know. I attend a lot of activities, uh, both ballgames and, and other activities, and I am just so proud of our students. And, and those of you who coach, you probably don't know this about me, but Mike does. One of the reasons I sit across from the coach, I'm very into a coach's demeanor with our children, and that's extremely important to me as a board member, and I am very proud to say that, that I am very pleased and proud of the people whom we have coaching our students.
Good, anyone else? All right, thank you very much, and congratulations on the great. Eleven point oh is our new business. Eleven point one, do I have a motion regarding the minutes of March nineteenth?
Move approval as presented.
Second. Any discussion? I am going to abstain from this if I was not here March nineteenth. Anyone else? Anything to say, any corrections? Say none? Okay, all in favor? Five, okay. Eleven point two, minutes of March twenty-sixth, um, do I have a motion?
Move approval as presented.
Second.
Any corrections, additions, anything? Okay, very good, all in favor? Six, thank you. Eleven point three, a motion to approve a donation from the Discover Brighter Futures Fund, Discover High School. Anyone here to represent that?
David, uh, were you, were you planning on, um, addressing this, or shall I, uh, do it?
I'm sorry, this is a question.
He's, he distracted you. I, I saw, I saw that happening. Um, this, uh, this relates to John McHugh's, um, donation that he is, has accepted. Uh, do you want me to cover the details? Okay, um, this is, uh, the Discover Pathway to Financial Success Program, and it's a grant that is, has been given by the Discover Brighter Futures Fund to the Scarborough Public Schools to be used for financial education and financial education curriculum. It's a fairly sizable grant. Uh, it is, uh, seven thousand two hundred and eighty dollars, and, um, and basically the, the person, um, connected to this at the high school is John McHugh. So I would recommend, um, that the board accept, uh, this incredible, um, grant.
Wow. Do I have a motion for that?
Move approval.
Um, who was that again?
I said, yeah, so move.
Jackie was first.
Second.
I just, I said one thing, it was seven thousand eight hundred and twenty.
Eight twenty, okay. Seven thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars in the bank.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go with what Christine says.
Okay. Yes. Do we know what is, will be used for?
It is, um, specifically to be used for, uh, to promote financial education of students and to, um, I guess, purchase curriculum for the purposes of financial education, and I don't think that we can do enough for that.
Thank you.
Very good, all in favor? Six, thank you. And now we have, um, Steph Cox is here. She's the executive director of Project Grace. Do you wanna, uh, talk a little bit?
Thank you very much for the invitation to, uh, come before you tonight. Project Grace, um, we'd also like to thank you, Jackie, for mentioning the backpacks and our partnerships with Kewanas. Um, we had a very fun evening on, uh, April ninth was the first-ever Junior Trivia Bee hosted by the Builders Club, which is part of Kewanas, and we wanna commend Ian Engelmann and all the teachers and staff at the middle school, and also the welcome that we got from Wentworth School for the very first-ever trivia bee for the middle school students. There were trophies, there was lots of fun, those kids are smart, it's amazing, and we're gonna have another one next year and hope all of you will join us there. And we thank you, um, for the chance to give them recognition. Uh, tonight I came, uh, I'm coming before you to present a check for two thousand five hundred dollars from Project Grace. Um, we have, for the past few years, been providing this money to the school nutrition program, and it's our hope that by investing in the nutrition program, we're also investing in student success. As you all know, you cannot pay attention if you're hungry. And, um, unfortunately, there are a lot of hungry kids in Maine and, and right here even in Scarborough too, and, uh, Jackie Perry and, and others can certainly attest to that, as well as Kelly Murphy, who helps with that backpack program during the holidays. Um, I just can't believe it, that peanut butter is a luxury, you know? We have to put an end to that. Um, so that's what this grant is about, it's to give kids, um, a little extra. Um, the, the staff and the nutrition program are keenly observant, they have good hearts, and they know what they're doing when it comes to taking care of kids and making sure they're eating healthy, uh, nutritious foods. And these grants provide things like, um, milk for a hundred and eighty-three kids, uh, snacks, over four thousand snacks, or about four thousand snacks, lunches, um, second helpings for kids who don't get enough at home. Uh, you know, as you can see, it's, it's just, it's just not right that kids are hungry, and so we can do something about it. That's what this grant is about. Um, you can also see work that Project Grace is doing to support the Scarborough Food Pantry, whether it's food drives, initiating a, a community garden to grow vegetables for the food pantry, and a number of other things. So you can visit us on projectgracemaine.org, that's a commercial, and, uh, support our work, uh, as you can. And thank you very much, um, to the school board for having us tonight. We partner a lot with all of the schools, and we receive referrals, um, from social workers and school nurses. Cindy Fassulo is in wonderful liaison with the nurses and staff there. Um, we're able to buy a pair of sneakers for a kid who doesn't have one, or make sure everybody has hats and mittens. There are some good knitters here in Scarborough, nobody should be without a hat and mittens. They take good care of everybody. So, uh, it's been a long night, um, I wanna thank you again for, for your support and, and help for Project Grace.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to?
Move to, um, um, accept the donation?
Second. Very good, all in favor? Six, thank you.
And again, that's a generous donation of two thousand five hundred dollars. Thank you very much.
Eleven point five, a motion to approve a two thousand dollar donation from the Wilkinson Foundation to go to the Wentworth School Garden. Is there someone here to speak on that?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Um, this is, um, from the Wilkinson Foundation, and, um, and it's, uh, specifically Catherine Hewitt, who secured this, um, donation. It is a two thousand donation from that foundation, and, um, and that's a great thing for the new Wentworth School Garden.
Do you want to say anything about that, Julie?
No, yeah, I just wanted to mention Catherine Hewitt's name because she's done a lot of work in the planning and design of the Scarborough, uh, Wentworth Garden.
Very good, and that's a very generous donation.
Just had a quick question. Uh, we're gonna grow vegetables and that for the cafeteria, is that correct, or is that more of a?
You're eventually gonna get there.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept that donation?
Move approval as presented. Second.
And any other, any discussion? Very good, all in favor? Six, thank you. So this side, a motion to approve the bargaining contract between the Scarborough Board of Education and the Scarborough Administrative Association. Do I have a motion there?
Uh, move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six, very good. And eleven point seven, second reading of the two thousand fifteen sixteen school calendar. Do I have a motion to consider this? Second reading?
Move approval?
Excuse me, there is public comment? Um, I believe we're just going to go right ahead on our, uh, board.
New business, they can, public comment does come before the motion.
Yep. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak, who, particularly if you haven't spoken already on the topic, and you have something to say?
My name is Michelle Markham. We continue to hear Scarborough schools want to improve. Although there are many things I'm very proud of in our Scarborough schools, I am in support of continuous improvement and a desire to further improve our schools. We also hear that in order to improve our schools, we need additional professional development for our teachers. This too I am supportive, as long as it's not disruptive to the students. Yet the calendar that's been presented to the board utilizes late starts as a means for professional development, which has been voiced by many parents as disruptive to students. Most of the main schools in the area that are ranked higher than Scarborough schools utilize either early release or in-service teacher workshop days. For example, Yarmouth utilizes in-service, Falmouth early release, Cape Elizabeth, a combination of in-service and early release days, and Wells in-service days. There's been some reference to the Kennebunk Schools utilizing additional late starts for their high school students, but I'd like to inform you that they also have the ability to have an additional bus route for the high school students, so the students arrive at school at the scheduled late time. Scarborough plans to bus the high school students to the high school at the same time as the middle school students. Thus, any benefit they would gain to sleep in has been eliminated. Additionally, in the prior meeting, Joanne Seisler mentioned that less than three hundred high school students currently take the bus, which seems very light considering the school has in excess of five hundred students just in the ninth and tenth grades. Many students that receive rides from their parents also have siblings in the middle school. For these students, they are likely to therefore be dropped off at the high school at the same time as the middle school starts school day, therefore increasing the number of students in the library and cafeteria waiting for the school day to begin. I'd like to refer to the school board policy, EEA, the Student Transportation Services. It states the Scarborough School Department will provide transportation at the beginning and end of the school day for all students living beyond a reasonable distance from their school or from a scheduled bus as approved by the board. It also states it is the board's intent that transportation be scheduled and routed in a way that best serves the educational interest of students and the operations of the school. I feel the proposed calendar has not had the consequences fully considered. Additionally, I feel Scarborough should follow the lead of other successful Maine schools and implement their calendars rather than attempting to create their own without any proven record of success. I'd like to remind you that the primary reason the proposed school calendar was voted down last meeting was due to the increased number of late starts for the high school students. Yet the only apparent change in the revised calendar is the elimination of early releases. As always, I would like to thank you for your continued dedication to our children, your students. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Sophie Gleistin, fourteen Long Meadow Road. Um, I'd just like to urge you to, uh, realize the impact that this issue, um, has had, you know, on your support throughout the community, and to, um, uh, really consider that, uh, you know, it, it might be time to just keep what we have and then work hard next year as, all together as a team. Um, I'm looking at the Yarmouth School Quality Survey, the first annual survey they put out, um, that asks a lot of questions of parents and students. Um, school calendar doesn't have to be one of them, but, um, I just think there's a lot of collaboration that we can do together. Um, I really feel that you're going to lose a lot of goodwill, um, through this calendar process because of, unfortunately, how the, how the whole thing has progressed, and I, I don't, I'm not, you know, saying, "Oh, it was, yeah, it was anyone's fault," but it just, it just happened this time that it has progressed in a very contentious way, and, um, I would urge you to consider that because you need the support of a lot of people to, uh, support the schools and get the budgets passed.
Thank you. Anyone else looking?
Thank you. Anyone else looking? None. So, wait, do we?
That's a motion.
Yep, so move approval, the calendar as presented, second.
Very good, any discussion from the board?
Well, I will just talk about, because we did spend a lot of time in policy level discussing this revision and removing the two district-wide early releases. I spoke a lot at the previous meeting, all the reasons why this can't be put off for a year, in my opinion, because there is immediate improvement in student learning that will happen the day that the first late start happens. The follow-up will continue in the next one, it's immediate, it's impactful. Students who are in the high school will see the results this year in a given week or month. It's absolutely worth the shortening of the school year, which Scarborough, as I stated before, has a longer school year and a longer school day than almost every district, certainly in Southern Maine, but almost every district in Maine that I've looked at. We've spent a lot of time on this. This is not done haphazardly, this is not done out of spite, this is not done in spite of parental involvement. It's with all that in mind that we went forward, and still, in my opinion, in the opinion of the policy committee, is still the best interest of our students, to get the education they deserve, and will have an immediate impact. We removed the two early releases that will just, you know, might eliminate some confusion, and does give back those four extra hours to kids district-wide. There is no change for K to eight, they will have the same 10 late starts they have had for the last two years. The change at the high school is, there are a lot of reasons for it. There's the, hopefully implementing new technology, there's the re-accreditation, there's the schedule challenges, I mean, there's a lot of issues at the high school that will be immediately improved by having these late starts, and I feel the trade-off is well worth it.
Anyone else?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to support this calendar for a couple of reasons. One, the recent emails that I have received, and I think most of you have as well, have been supported, supportive of this calendar as a revision, that's number one. Number two, it's a compromise. It's a compromise I can live with. And the third part is that I taught high school, and I went through an accreditation, and it is enormously time-consuming for faculty and administration to do a self-evaluation, put it all together, and then to have three days of visitors coming in to evaluate your self-evaluation. We postponed this for a year because we have a new high school principal. We cannot do an accreditation without time to prepare, and that is why I am going to support this. Those are the reasons, not just the one.
Yes.
So we started this discussion several weeks ago with the clear need for a compromise, and by definition, that means everybody has to give up something so that nobody gets everything. Do I think this calendar is optimal? I do not. Do I think that this calendar is a good compromise? I do for the time being, but I do have some reservations that I'd like to share that I don't expect to be necessarily implemented. There are more suggestions that I'd like to, to, to talk about. I would like to see the calendar committee or some ad hoc committee formed. I'd like to see our student representatives be on that committee, if at all possible. I'd also like to see that opened up to the parents in terms of a volunteer type of basis, not necessarily an appointment basis type of thing. I would like to see a report out from that committee that gives us at least two or three recommendations moving forward of ways that we could adopt or modify things to maybe try and accommodate everybody else. We'll see, let's see what they come up with, let's task them with that. I'm not convinced that the transportation is the right approach, that's my one hangup, one of my major hangups with this. I don't think it's, it's, it's not an optimal solution, it's the only solution I think we have now because of our limited resources. So I'm not concerned enough about it to say I can't support it, but I would really like to see some evidence and some feedback about how that's working out when we implement it. I'd like to see perhaps a report on absences or tardies for the, the days that it's a high school late start only, to make sure that the kids are in fact getting to school and, and able to perform on time as expected. And I would like to see a more detailed formal counting of the students who are utilizing the buses, because I do think that that's going to be important. If, if they aren't being fully utilized, then we'll have to adjust that some way somehow, I think. While I think all those are important, I, I don't think it's enough to hold this calendar up. I, I agree wholeheartedly that the time is, the time necessary at the high school is very evident. I appreciate the fact that the, the K through eight is really not going to be impacted at all next year, and that's going to give us an opportunity to really come together and do this, I think, in a more collaborative and effective way. But we do have to move forward with something for next year. We can't just paralyze the district based on some, some issues that I think can be worked out in the future. So I could support the calendar for those reasons.
Anyone else?
Just to add to Chris's ad hoc committee that we've sort of all talked about for weeks now, I would also like to include on that, besides the student reps and parents and school board members, but also maybe a principal or some staff of, you know, the teachers that are actually in the trenches.
At the different phase levels was one of the thoughts I had with that as well. So I mean, if you had somebody from the high school who might say, oh, hey, this works out really well for me, oh, this, this becomes an issue for me, or even at the middle school, or whatever grade it might be.
Because there's so many, there's so many moving parts to this calendar, and it, it's hard sometimes for people to sort of step back from their role with the calendar to, to see, how does this impact Mr. Creacher? How does this impact my son's first grade teacher? You know, so I think having all of those aspects in the same room talking about it could be beneficial.
I'd also like to see come out of that committee, I mean, if a recommendation, I, I don't want us to be limited by the resources that we currently have. If we come up with an optimal calendar, whether it's adding in-service days, or whether it's changing late start to early release, or something that involves increased investment in transportation, let's put that on the priority list, and let's make sure that we're not restricting the calendar based on our limited resources. This is very important to the community outside, not just within our school district, but outside of the parents and business community. There are many businesses that work in conjunction with the school calendar. So I'd like to see, if the recommendation comes out, not necessarily being limited by what we have for resources, but let's come up with the best calendar approach, and then let's talk about the resources that we need to invest to achieve that calendar.
Can I say one more thing about that? So my vision for this calendar committee is not just late start, early release, what days off, any of that. I really want to take a wholesale approach to the calendar. I honestly believe that our high school and perhaps middle school students would benefit from going to school later, swapping with primary school. Primary school kids are generally awake earlier, ready to roll. High school students are not. So let's take a look at that, let's see what works, let's see if we can make that switch, and if we can get the stakeholders that would be involved, obviously it would be parents K to 12, and then teachers and administrators on board, then I, I would hope that we take a long look at that and not just late start, early release. I know that that's been the focus of this calendar issue this year, but it goes beyond that, and absolutely budgetary implications are a huge part of it, and is what's handcuffed the proposals to this point. So I would like to really start in the summer, you know, July, August, and go ahead as long as we can until a calendar needs to be presented, which is not until March anyway, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's a long time, and, you know, it'll be a lot of work, and I hope that a lot of people are interested in, in joining that, because I think a lot of good can come from that, and, and not even, I'm, I don't, I think that we have a wonderful community in Scarborough, and I, it worries me when an issue does become contentious, because I don't believe that somebody speaking out against an issue means that they don't support the schools, or that they, I would hope would not, not support the schools because they don't agree with one issue. So this is a great opportunity to prove that in Scarborough, and to continue the collaboration that we've enjoyed for decades, so.
I just wanted to say some of the similar things that Chris was talking about, like the buses and things like that, maybe there were opportunities for us to take a look at some things like that within the committee.
So I would ask that you all give some consideration as to having someone of you step forward to head up at that committee, and you would make a date, and then we would have people sending information your way who may be interested in being on that committee. So give it some thought, and just let me know, and then we can put it out there on our website, and we can start getting.
I, I'd just like to point out and use one of Dr. Entwistle's tools. We, we have, Mr. Legage and I have a, a great sheet that you had offered us that basically outlines how you want your committee to be formed, your goals, research.
Charter.
Exactly. I, I'd like to see that utilized, because I think that's a very effective tool, and that will help put the framework in place to help determine the best people that are going to be on that.
Okay, is it called charter?
A charter.
A charter, okay.
Yeah.
Good, okay, great. And I just want to chime in on this too. I, I, first of all, like I said before, I'm disappointed that the middle school is not included in what the high school work is doing, because we're going to need a seamless transition from the middle school students to the high school when it comes to the kind of work that has to be done. So I'd be real disappointed to see a lot of high school work done, and the middle school doesn't know what that is all about, and is unable to join in with them because they don't have the time. So I'm disappointed about that. Having said that, I will support this calendar, but I would hope that any committee that gets formed also is informed about the degree and the depth of the work that has to be done that our teachers are facing. Because it's very hard for just average people, and you can include me in that, to understand the amount of work that we're talking about that has to be done by our staff. So I would hope that that's a piece of it, that you engage the, the staff and the administrators, and as well as any of our leadership people who have anything to do with the professional development that is going on for the past two years, for example, and the work ahead, so that we can begin to help parents understand what this is all about, and how it will change education for their children. So, nothing minds. Anything else? Very good, all in favor? Six. Thank you. We have a calendar. Eleven point eight, the first reading of policy KJB, distribution of community information. Ms. Murphy, do you want to talk about that?
Um, do we want a motion first?
A motion?
All right, move approval, second.
And none.
I, I, sorry, can I just make a suggestion? Do we, if there aren't any changes or anything, can we take them in bulk, or do you want to do them individually?
This one does have changes.
Okay.
So this is a first reading of policy KJB, and there are changes to this. This is distribution of community information, and some changes that were made, really just outlines that we would not allow distribution of materials at school events or on school property that do not fall within the guidelines of this policy. And so materials for projects, activities or programs, the purpose of which is to promote a particular religious, political, or philosophical viewpoint, we would not approve a distribution of those anytime on school grounds or at school activities, or materials is deemed unsuitable for children. So this is pretty self-explanatory on those. If you have questions about any of the other changes, I'm happy to answer. But it really kind of just updates that it's now mostly electronic, and it will not be papers and Thursday folders primarily, will be, there's a link on the website to community information, and it's all, all listed there, that we don't endorse the activities that are on there, but we do supply them as a, as a public service, so.
Anyone else? Okay, all in favor? Six, true. And eleven point nine, do I have a motion on the first reading, CEBB Rules of Order?
Move approval, second.
Any discussion?
No changes, correct?
No changes.
So that one, I believe there are no, no changes to that.
Oh, all in favor?
So, I'm sorry, can we take that as a first and a second reading, then?
Yeah.
My understanding that if there are no changes-
There's no changes in the first.
-that we are doing a first and second, it's just to-
To refresh it.
-to market, that we've, that we've looked at it, we've reviewed it, and we-
I'm just saying that for the public's benefit.
Yeah.
So, all right, so this is a first and second reading, and that's it?
Correct.
Okay, sorry.
All in favor? Six, very good. And now, do we want to just group these together? Or a motion? Chris?
I'll, I'll defer to the policy chair. I'd be happy to, to move that.
No, that's, that's fine with me.
Move for approval, remainder of approval is printed.
Second.
Ten through thirteen.
Ten through thirteen.
Um, I have a question. So that includes the elimination of one, or just, were we doing first readings on?
It, it is, if, if that's part of the bulk motion.
About ten through twelve.
Ten through twelve, then, that's fine.
Ten through twelve.
Just in the effort, just the effort of time, that's all.
Yep.
All right, very good.
Uh, second, that?
Very good.
Sorry, seconded, fantastic.
All right.
Good.
All approved?
Everybody's getting a little punchy.
Yes, too many light nights in a row.
And eleven point thirteen, the elimination of a non-required policy called CHA, the Development of Administrative Regulation, a motion?
Uh, move approval, second.
And discussion. Kelly, do you want to explain this?
Um, regulation.
Oh, yes, that one, right. I was like, why, why were we getting?
Because we didn't know what it was.
Right, because this was a, a policy when we all read it individually, and then I brought it to the superintendent, no one could define what this was, especially 3.0. It's, they contradict each other, one in three kind of contradict each other, and administrative regulations, because I brought it out, I said, what's an administrative regulation? He said, I don't know what you're talking about. So if we can't understand it, it's not something that's in play, nobody's using it, it's not required or recommended, it's not on our, on our list of, from Drummond to Woodson, that's required or recommended. It was adopted in 1971, revised in 82, and in 2002. And again, 2002 was that magical year where the whole policy manual in one month was revised. So it was our opinion, the policy committee, that we would just eliminate this from the book.
Anyone else? Very good, all in favor? Six. It's gone.
Thank you.
Eleven point fourteen, appointments.
This is, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Um, I thought you were going to say, yeah, this is a high school, middle school, spring athletic appointments as presented.
Do I motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Yes.
Christine has a question for Mr. Legage.
I do, Mr. Legage, is, is this, or Mr. Creacher, perhaps Superintendent Entwistle, is this the end of the spring appointments, or are we still, do we still have some outstanding?
Still have some, actually.
How many are we talking that we have outstanding?
Probably one.
Okay. Aren't most of these activities quite rolling underway already, or, okay? I'll just leave it at that, then.
Anyone else?
Yes. Excuse me, please, it's just nice to see Christie Manning's name on here. She was an outstanding track star here, and- She was an outstanding track star here at Holy Cross, and it's nice to see her back, and I'm sure her parents are glad she's earning a little money.
Not much.
All in favor? Six. Very good. Eleven point one five, donation to Wentworth.
This is a very generous donation from a citizen and former board member, probably board chair, I guess board chair as well, Robert Mitchell, and it's in the amount of one thousand dollars.
With a matching from Unum.
So, you're accepting both of those donations, the match and Mr. Mitchell's and his family's generous donation.
Move approval as presented, and graciously accept Mr. Mitchell's two thousand, one thousand and one thousand matching from Unum donation.
I second.
Thanks for the...
That's great.
Pardon?
Very good. Yes?
I, I just want to thank Mr. Mitchell. It's nice to see him continuing to be actively engaged, even though he's no longer on the board, and it's greatly appreciated that that consideration continues even after the dedication of participation on the board, so.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell, if you're at home watching us.
We have to vote. We have to vote.
Yes, I know.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right. All in favor? Six. Thank you. All right. Twelve point one, Policy E C A D, Security Camera.
Okay, move approval of Policy E C A D. It's a security camera system policy, which we have not had previously. Second.
Any discussion?
So, this one...
Is this a second reading?
It's the second reading. It's, um, so this was unfinished business from the last meeting, when we went too late and we had to roll it over. So, it looks like it's been around for a long time, but it really, it's just a second reading. Um, so, are there, I don't know if anyone has any questions about it. These are, uh, we pretty much took a framework from Drummond to Woodson for this one, which they recommended that school boards adopt, so.
Any questions about that?
I have one.
Yes?
Just, I know that there was a note here about that there would be signs placed in the common areas in the building. Do, I mean, are those signs already in place, or...
No, they're not in place, yet.
So, they'll be in place by September?
Always by September.
Okay. Just checking, so that if somebody says something, we can say that, yes, it was noted that by September that they would be placed.
Are you going to say smile, you're on candid camera, or are they going to be more informative?
A little more.
It should be a pair of eyeballs.
That's right. An emoticon.
Yeah. Big eye.
Emoji.
Anything else? All in favor? Six. And two. And twelve point two, E C A C dash R. Again, Security Camera.
E C A D. Yeah. This is E C A D dash R. This is the regulation of that policy.
Okay. Does that motion?
Move approval as presented, second.
Okay. Very good. Any questions on this one? Very good. All in favor? You've been great tonight, you guys.
I have my stress ball, so I'm content, perfectly content.
Does that keep in the box, and that work?
That was it. I wasn't giving it to you in December.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to...
Okay.
Thirteen point zero, adjourned.
So, we have thirteen point O. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, second.
All in favor? Six. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Very good.
I just wanted...